Good evening and welcome to the September 10th School Committee Meeting. This meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Media. Dr. Leclair?
Good evening, everyone. Can we please stand for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next regular school committee meetings will be September 24th, October 22nd, November 12th, and December 10th. There is no school on Monday, October 14th, due to Columbus Day, and there are half-days of school on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, October 23, 24, and 25, due to teacher professional development and parent-teacher conferences. I'd also like to just note that school began last week. Everything's going well, and just to let everyone in the community, a simple reminder that buses are on the road and children are walking to school, so please be mindful of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any correspondence?
No correspondence.
Do we have any gifts?
No.
So now is the portion for public speak. Is there anyone who wants to get up and say anything? Okay. Onto subcommittee reports. Finance Subcommittee.
We will be setting an appointment for a meeting coming up here shortly, but we do not have not had one here yet.
And was our decision that it was going to be like in October?
I think early October, especially since we don't have a whatever is October 8th meeting, so we may try to schedule it for that week or something like that.
Okay. Excellent. Policy Review.
We will be meeting next Tuesday at 5:00 p.m.
Collaborative.
We have not met. Our next meeting is on the 25th of this month.
Okay. Education Policy.
Not much of an update. I think we all have been just waiting for some concrete news about any legislation for the foundation budget, but delays and delays.
It's early in the year.
That's what state legislature's good at.
Wellness?
We have to schedule our fall meeting.
Okay, so that hasn't happened either. So we're just getting up and running. So that's why none of these meetings have happened. They, I promise you, they will get going. Health and Safety.
No.
Okay. Soon. All right, does anybody, this can be a very short meeting. We're playing. Does anybody have anything under other? Alrighty, on we go.
Can I just say I'd like to thank Ami for bringing us wonderful treats to start, apples and apple cider doughnuts. So thank you.
Does that count as gifts, actually?
Next.
Edible, it doesn't count.
All right, so now for our NIASC report.
Okay, good evening, and I just want to present our NIASC report this evening, which I know many of you have eagerly been awaiting the results of the NIASC visit from late last winter. So the report came out in draft form over the summer, and it was finalized right, I think, a few weeks before school started. So the high school administration has been working to kind of roll it out with their staff, and you know that we've had a changeover in the administration, so it's been a really good opportunity to dig into the information. So we have Mr. Evans and Ms. Wilson here tonight to go over the report and give you some of the highlights. So, welcome.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello, good evening.
Thanks for having me. So, we're trying to keep this not too complicated. You do have access to the full report, which I think is 115 pages.
It was.
116, but the last one's blank.
He reads the, he reads the last page first, clearly.
It's great reading. If you, if you have insomnia, I think it says fine here. So really, what I want to do is present to the public tonight just sort of an overview of what's in the report, starting with, so I've put my learning objectives up here and bonus points for anyone who knows what the S-C-M-W-B-A-T point stands for.
Do you?
Counting on the educators in the room to know this.
I know.
No pressure, Superintendent.
You got me.
She already gave a.
It's short for stu, uh, "School Committees Will Be Ab," oh, I did it wrong.
Oh, that's why.
School Committee Members, no, no idea. School Committee Members Will Be Able To. So oftentimes, teachers will put on their learning objectives, "Students Will Be Able To," which is often shortened here as S-W-B-A-T. So today, it's School Committee Members Will Be Able To. So our objectives tonight, for you to understand what the NIASC process was, to understand how the report is organized, identify the major themes in the recommendations and the commendations, and to understand what happens next. So, the process unfolds over several years. About two years ago, I would say, the, the school began a very rigorous self-study process. It was overseen by two co-chairs, Jared Orne and Eileen Clavalo, who did tremendous work that is evident not just by my conversations with people on staff, but also from the NIASC visiting chair. And that is, this is really fun. That's, that's much better, thank you. The NIASC visiting chair really went out of his way to compliment Eileen and Jared for the work that they did. And having been on a visiting team before, I know how much work they, those people put in. So the self-study basically identifies and organizes data and artifacts to support, in support of seven standards, and we'll go over what those standards are in a couple minutes here. Then a full report is, present is made available, and the, all the artifacts are organized. So that often is a combination of electronic evidence as well as big buckets full of documentation, one for each standard. Then the visit happens. The visit happened in March of last year. A team of 10 educators from other members that represent different disciplines and levels of school, there's administrators, there's people from different disciplines. They spent four days in East Hampton, in and out of the building. They work hard, having done this. It is not a leisurely four days. You work through the night and early next morning. They had access to classrooms, to teachers, to administrators, students, district personnel, many of you, I assume, and families. They really pour through all of the evidence, all of the artifacts, and interview a number of people to collect as much evidence and really get under the hood of everything that's happening in the school. As Dr. Leclair pointed out, the report is then put together and they sent to draft. We looked at it for any partic, any specific mistakes or omissions. We send them back, and then they send a final report, which came to us at the beginning of August. And we are obligated to distribute those things within 60 days to our faculty, to put it on our website here. And a copy goes to the public library, which I've printed, but haven't dropped off yet, but I will.
You can give it to Jonathan.
You can give it to Jonathan. He works at the library.
I could, except that I left it at the, sorry, Jonathan. And I could have given it to you the other day, but I didn't have it printed. So the report is organized as follows. The description of each of the standards, which again, I'll show in the next slide. There's an introduction to the school and the community. This is where I learned how great East Hampton's water is, because they actually included that. The review of our core values, which is captured in our Nest, and our learning expectations, which is captured in our Eagles. If you come into the school, you'll see the big banners with our Nest, our core values of nurturing, encouraging, support, and together, and our Eagles, which are our seven learning expectations, six, excuse me. And then this is really the bulk of the report, the review of each standard, where they go through the review of their evidence in a long narrative, long, usually a couple pages worth. They cite the sources of their evidence, and then they provide commendations and recommendations within each standard. And that's really the, the heart and soul of the report. Of the 115, 16, if you're, if you like, blank pages, probably 80 of them are devoted to, to that. These are the standards. The standards fall in two broad categories, teaching and learning and support. There are four teaching and learning standards. You see them up there, core values, beliefs and learning expectations, curriculum, instruction, and assessment. And then support standards, school culture and leadership, school resources for learning, and then community resources for learning. The big answer is yes, East Hampton High School is fully accredited for the next 10 years. There's no probation, there's no maybes where you need to get back to us. Yeah, there, I would say that it's a, it's a pass. Check the box. I mean, the report is really not sent as a way to say you get one year, you get five years. I mean, sometimes it happens that way, but basically, what they want to do is give us a blueprint for how we should move forward and acknowledge the work that we've done. But in terms of whether or not we got accredited, yes, we did. There are 37 recommendations, and what I tried to do is sort of, Sue and I got together and sort of organized these into two broad themes. The first one, it's a little bit hard to read there, is create opportunities for, and the second one is develop consistency around best practices in. So the create opportunities for is really about managing our time and resources in a way that allow us to do some of the bullet points that are up there. So in our 180 days, six and a half hours a day, there's not a lot of time for staff to get together with each other to talk about curriculum, student support, and collect and review data. There's a lot of recommendations that speak to create time and space and opportunity for teachers to talk to each other, and also for students to develop meaningful connections to staff. School tends to be this freight train that just keeps chugging along, and you're either on board, if you step off for a moment, then things happen, you gotta run to catch up. We don't take a lot of time in our school day to slow things down, to give opportunities for other things to happen. We've started that conversation at the high school about how we might be able to do that, but there's lots of implications if you try to build in time. And we want to make sure that we're looking at all of that thoughtfully and carefully before we move forward. But we are starting that conversation, much of it prompted by a lot of the recommendations in the report. The second major theme, developing consistency, they identified in the commendations many places where they saw really good things happening, good teaching, good curriculum, strong assessment practices. What they say is, what is your system for making sure that that's happening consistently, happening consistently throughout the building? And so that's really on the administration to create an environment in which staff are supported in their development, and there are opportunities to work with each other to, everybody raise their level. So I think those are the two primary themes that come out of the recommendations.
I'm curious, maybe you weave this into these places, but I felt, reading it, that there was a third area, too, that was very clearly about resources, both in terms of physical resources as well as staffing resources that was in there, too. I don't know if you're gonna talk about within those, or if that's just the third piece.
Yeah, we actually, where it says create opportunities for, I think we edited out resources and opportunities for, just because I think there, there's somewhat implied, there needs to be opportunities, resources are built into that, but I would agree absolutely with that. And let's see where it says in the commendations. So we had, not that we're keeping score, but 37 recommendations and 40 commendations. So we ended up on the plus side there. Actually, the commendations, if you read through them, it's really, it really speaks to a lot of good things that are happening and have been happening at East Hampton High School. When we, on our first day, first full day with staff, before the kids came, we identified, we went through and identified 20, 21, like half, like power commendations that we really felt spoke to the effort and the skill level that the staff demonstrated and provided evidence for that came out in the report. And we brought them all into the, to the little dance studio. I don't know if you're familiar with it. It's kind of a small space, but we put them up all around the walls and made them go around and breathe them all in, along with each other, because it was a tight space. But it was really powerful. I think that going through all of them, just those, just half, really reminded people of the strong work that they've been doing. The themes that we identified in the commendations coming down, the commitment of the faculty and staff really came through over and over. Strong connections between staff and students, the focus on the core values and the learning expectations, which will continue, community support. If you're, if you're looking for some specific things for this group, I think standard seven will speak directly to the work that the committee does. Our commitment to growth and professional development practices, which have been highlighted at the state level for some of the professional development activity that happens at East Hampton High School. And finally, our next steps. So we've already started using the commendations and recommendations to develop a growth plan. Monday, we had our first faculty meeting where we started our deep dive into the recommendations. And each of the standard, each standard had a committee that put together the artifacts, and each of those committees got together, looked at the recommendations, and started to prioritize them. It's a process that will continue. We just started, we spent about 40 minutes on it on, on Monday, and it was a conversation, you know, it's, it's pretty unusual for the end of a staff meeting at 3:15 to have to remind people that they can leave. Usually, they're sort of ready to go. It's my first staff meeting at East Hampton, so I'm not, I'm just speaking of my previous experiences, but I had to say, okay, guys, we're like, we're actually done, you have to go now, because anything further is beyond what, what I need. They were deep into this conversation, and I had more than one group say, we are gonna start, we're gonna continue this, right? So the enthusiasm for the growth is really evident. So we've started that process. We will provide NIASC with two and five-year progress reports. That's the typical requirement for them. And then the cycle begins really in about seven years, the self-reflection cycle. There'll be, there's a new process that is just coming on board with NIASC, but they now do something called a collaborative conference visit, which happens two years before your decennial visit, in which they spend like two days. I just did one last spring in Leominster, and it's a decennial visit light. You get a quick view of the thing, you spend two days with a team of four or five people, and are able to give them feedback on how they're doing. So that'll happen in EHS if all goes according to plan. Sometimes the, NIASC has to adjust their calendar, but we'd expect that in 2027, and the decennial visit in 2029. And every time I wrote those numbers, I wrote, I wrote 2016, 2017, and 2019, and had to go back and fix all of them. Any questions?
I guess, do you have a timeline for the growth plan, and just for our own sake of sort of looking forward to it?
So I don't know that I will, so what I said to the staff on Monday is, think about what we want to do in the next two years, partially because I think that's a good timeframe to work with, and partially because I know there's a two-year progress letter. And I think that what we're gonna do is look at our recommendations, prioritize them into what we think we need to do first, and what we can do in two years. So I don't know that, I've been planning on putting that together in a growth report, but certainly we could to say, here are the things that we decided we're gonna focus on.
So I think that, like you said, first and foremost, we passed. It's great. We get to learn a lot from their thoughts and reflections coming into our school districts. That was really helpful. I think going through all the 37 and 40 was really helpful to read what they saw and what they pointed out. I, I think that there's a lot of places that, like you're saying, there's a lot of places to bring the faculty together, talk about the places that we can develop. There definitely was a lot of comments about time for collaboration, professional development focus. We've also had a very strong focus the last couple of years, and why we haven't had as much time for other issues beyond our equity work. So there's some ways to look at that into the next few years. I think, though, that one of the things that really stood out for me, and I wish that the mayor was here, because, and maybe she will get to read the 115 pages or not, but I think there was also some really clear statements about resources. You know, we, as a school committee, approved the budget last year that had a lot more financial support for a couple of these key things. There was things for, that they brought up specifically. Resources, tech resources, library resources were inadequate and need to be funded and supported, and that's something that was in our budget that we put forward. There was also talk about additional support for special needs teaching, for counseling. Those are all things that we were seeking to have proper funding for going into this school year, and unfortunately, the mayor did not choose to support that budget. So I think that there's some things in there that also point towards what we need to do as a school committee, and what we need to be looking at as we develop next year's budget. And that also comes from you guys into the process with the superintendent and comes into the school committee. But I think that we need to be very thoughtful when we're looking at that resource side of things, too, to make sure that we do get those things funded, to make sure that our kids do have the proper library resources, the proper support staff, the proper, you know, technology, so that their, you know, computer carts are usable. There's a lot of those things that were in there that are maybe the, the underside of this report, but I felt like is a critical part based on the work that we do as a school committee. So I just wanted to make sure that that was also pointed out for people who aren't gonna read the 115-page document, that there was also some stuff for us to be working on, too.
I very much appreciate you saying so. Any other questions?
If I could just comment before you sit down, I was up at the high school on the day that you were doing the carousel work in the dance studio, and I think it was a great opportunity for the staff to come back into the building off of summer vacation and to dive right into the results of the NIASC report. So it gave them an opportunity to really immerse themselves in the outcomes, rather than being handed the 150 pa, 15 pages and say, go home and read this. They had the opportunity to have dialogue with their peers in real time, and walk around the room, look at the recommendations that were up there, and really kind of gravitate towards the ones that really resonated with them, and they really felt passionate about, and then they provided an opportunity to speak about why they kind of landed where they landed, and some of their own personal impressions about the recommendations or the commendations, those were the commendations, why they resonated with them. So I think it was a great opportunity for the faculty to become really part of the next steps. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. I, I agree that there was a lot of great energy in that space, and I would say that it was only eclipsed by the energy that I think I noticed in them on Monday when they were going over the recommendations, which means that I think that they're very interested in what the, what the growth part is.
They're invested.
And, and it was really, you know, it was really positive in there.
I would absolutely agree.
And just for a moment, if I, if I may, I want to just take a brief moment off, off the agenda to thank the large community, the, the high school parents in particular, for their patience in the students, as well as we worked through some, some difficulties with our master schedule at the start of the school year. Turnover is difficult at administrative level, and sometimes you, you don't hand off exactly the way you want to. The baton got dropped a little bit, and I would, I'm not trying to blame anybody, it's a two-way process there, but we discovered some problems in the schedule that we couldn't discover until school started, until we started working with kids and seeing what the issues were. And I just really want to thank everybody for their patience, but really, I want to highlight the work of our counseling department. Chris Alvaro, brand-new Kathleen Collins, and two interns, Julia Green and Nicole, I'm going, Mark, Marks, yeah, I believe, really did an amazing job. In, in the first three days, we extended our drop-out period to 10 days, thinking it would take 10 days to sort it all out. Literally by Friday, after starting the process on Tuesday, almost everything was really done, and they just did an amazing amount of work. So I really wanted to publicly thank them for that, and also the larger community for their patience on that.
Thank you. Good point. I just had two things to say. In terms of the collaboration recommendation, every time a school gets evaluated by NIASC, that's always the place where they make the strongest recommendations, because there's never enough time to collaborate. So I don't want people to think that we're not, that you're not spending time, the district isn't spending time trying to provide those times, but there's so many other mandates that happen within the school day that you just don't have enough. So don't be surprised if you see that every single time a school gets evaluated. And the other thing I wanted to do is just, I have gone through them, and it's a lot of work, and I want to thank the staff for the hard work. It is not just the leaders that do all this hard work, but there's a lot of preparation with all of the staff to make this happen, to make it happen so cleanly. So I just want to thank them.
Those two things are really true. Thank you for pointing them out. We do have some ideas about the time, and when the time is right, I'll share them with you. But it ain't yet. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, perhaps for the budget people related to this. I saw the recommendation about involving faculty in developing and implementing the budget, and I was wondering if maybe that's something to talk about in the future in terms of revising the budget process, but I also wonder about the additional burden and responsibility on faculty, if that's something that they would want to take on.
I think a normal practice is that the department heads give input into their department's line items, maybe not to the degree that they would like to be involved, but they usually can give you. Did you want to speak?
Well, it's also the school council.
Right.
Okay.
Right. So they, they get to provide some input in different means, but there are also some directions that may be established through the recommendations of NIASC or through district initiatives that, that maybe kind of take some of the funds that we have, like equity work.
Sure.
You know? So that may take away from some extra funds for athletics or something, you know?
And there were a lot of recommendations, and that's how the budget was developed. It's just that the last two years, we've gotten less than what we've asked for. And so then you're going back and you're trying to figure out where's the least painful way to cut that budget.
Right.
It's always interesting to see even just at the level of language, the disconnect between these sort of like accrediting and oversight bodies and the things they recommend, and then like the realities of the people who provide the funding, you know? This phrase, "Develop and implement a program to ensure the community and the district's governing body provide dependable funding for," da-da-da-da-da, all these various things that our schools could really use. Implement a program to ensure funding, like, there's no, there's nothing that we as a district or a governing body could possibly implement without local and, and state support. I don't know, I mean, preaching to the choir, but, yeah.
But that's okay. Good stuff. Any other?
I just wanted to ask, Bill, can you make the presentation available, at least to us, you know, if you could just email it to us?
Yeah.
I couldn't write fast enough, so I didn't, you know, take all my notes. I got through about a third of it.
So the next document I just want to share with you is the updated enrollment figures. And unlike many of our neighbors, our enrollment continues to be steady and increase a little bit. bit. So East Hampton, we may have challenges, but filling up our schools is not one of them. We have a lot of growth in this community, so we're very fortunate. So I don't know if anyone has any questions.
This might not be the time or place to ask the question, but can you remind me, because this is a question that got asked me by one of the parents. So as we have growth, and hopefully also as we begin to, with the new school, start to not have as much choice out at the early levels, how does the new school building have room to absorb a growth from those two places?
So there was, in the original plans, we were allowed to add, there's room for an extra classroom at each grade level.
That's what I thought, okay.
It's currently maybe being used as a science room or a technology lab, but in the event that enrollment grew, we could switch it over to a classroom.
Okay.
And that was, that was all they would let us do.
Right. I know there's limits from the state about that.
Any questions about this?
The next thing is, we have an updated, we have a letter from the Attorney General's Office that went to Cindy, so I know you wanted to read it.
So we're gonna read this letter.
Take your time.
I will take my time. It's a good letter. And then, we're gonna share it with the community and with staff. So this letter is from the Office of the Attorney General, and is regarding compliance with the memorandum of agreement. Dear Chair Kozinski, as you are aware, in August 2017, the East Hampton Public School District, EPSD, entered into a memorandum of agreement, MOA, with the Attorney General's Office to resolve civil rights complaints concerning East Hampton High School, EHS. Over the last year, we have worked closely with the EPSD Superintendent, Dr. Allison Leclerc, to monitor implementation of the MOA. Dr. Leclerc, EPSD, and EHS have demonstrated a strong commitment to creating an environment at EPSD schools that is positive, welcoming, and inclusive for all students. We believe that EPSD is now successfully and properly implementing the terms of the MOA. During the 2018-2019 school year, EPSD made significant and important progress in implementing the MOA, including by addressing several important outstanding items. For example, EPSD, number one, developed and received approval for new policies required by the MOA, including a bullying and harassment policy, an updated memorandum of understanding with the East Hampton Police Department concerning the Student Resource Office Program, and a related law enforcement involvement policy for district employees. Two, made changes and clarifications to its disciplinary policies and procedures to address hate speech and bias-related conduct at EPSD schools consistent with the MOA. Three, provided trainings for EHS, students, parents, and staff on bullying and bias-related harassment pursuant to the MOA. Four, appropriately handled incidents involving bias-related conduct at East Hampton High School consistent with its obligations under the MOA. And five, completed and submitted a timely disciplinary audit and year-end progress report. Heading into the 2019, 2020 school year, we have full confidence that EPSD will continue its progress in implementing the terms of the MOA. We have discussed with Dr. Leclerc the steps of EPSD and EHS to take, to, their plan to take to address certain remaining challenges, including those related to student discipline, and to continue to build on the progress of the last year. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. And it's signed sincerely, John Burke, Assistant Attorney General. Well, nice, nice news.
Nice news.
Great job. So that is gonna be shared with all the staff tomorrow? Awesome. And will this be put on our?
You have the only copy, so. Wasn't addressed to me, I just saw it.
Okay, well, I'm gonna hand it to you, and are we going to address, put this on the website?
Yes.
Okay, excellent.
Yes. I mean, it was addressed to you, as long as you're okay with it.
Yes, I am. I give it to you right now.
Thank you, thank you for taking such good care. It was a real embarrassment last summer when we discovered.
Yes, it was.
To say the least. So I think we're all very grateful that this has been shepherded much more carefully this year. I'm wondering about the disciplinary audit. Did we have results from an audit from last year, or will we anticipate this year's results?
Yes, so we have, we have the, we have, I wouldn't say results, they do a summary in the audit. And the results for the past two years, or the summary for the past two years, has really indicated that we have not had real major inconsistencies related to race bias issues in our discipline reporting. And the first year, the summer that I came here, when we received the results, they did indicate that they wanted more consistency in the way things were being reported, but it wasn't specific to any particular minority group. They just wanted, is that fair enough to say? They wanted us to shore up how we were identifying certain infractions, and how we were recording them in our data system. So we met periodically throughout the year with the Collaborative for North Hampton, the people that did the external audit, so they could help us better align our power schools' discipline system, so that our recording is much more accurate now. And I think we added some infractions, yeah, we added some more, more details within the level of offenses. And we continued, I think we added a little bit more this year, which you approved in the handbook at the last meeting. So the audit, the results are, they're, they're like six pages long, I can easily share them out there, but they don't really find any major inconsistencies. So.
Do you feel that fewer incidents can be attributed to the training that the students and the staff are receiving? Do you see that, the change in climate in a positive way?
I think there is a change in climate. I think there's also more of an awareness. And even when I spoke to the Attorney General's Office the other day, they said to me clearly, they said, the difference now than the difference two years ago, or three years ago, they said, is that when an issue is brought to the administration in the office, it is dealt with consistency consistently, no matter who the student is. And they said, that's the major difference between a couple of years ago and today. So I think maybe, maybe less is getting down to their office, but there's greater consistency in the way that it's dealt with.
That's important. And this letter says it all. I know how closely you've worked with them, and to get this letter saying that you're doing a good job, and that the district is doing a great job, really feels good, because we had some really tough years for a while, and it's nice to see it turning around, so thank you. Anything else? All right. Good news, so that's yours now. Thank you. Now it's for action.
Can I go back to one last thing, real quickly, too? So I just wanted to point out, too, there's been, I've had several parents going into the new school year, talk to me about classroom size. And so I was just going in and had done the numbers here in terms of what our classroom is for, both for, first for K through four, as well as five through eight. And people are always sort of asking, how high are we getting in terms of our classroom size? And actually, the average in K through four is twenty-point-zero-three, so we're basically at twenty students per classroom size, which is on the better end.
Yep.
I just thought that's important to point it out for parents. And then pretty much the same for middle school, too, it's twenty-point-four-three. So again, it's really basically at that, at twenty, and so it's that low end of what people are worried about, they're always asking, are we up to twenty-five or twenty-eight? Where are we at with our classroom size? So just as, we didn't really go into the details of these numbers, but I think it is good to point out, overall, our average pre-K through eight is about twenty students per classroom, so.
Thank you, that is a good thing to point out, and I was noticing it, and I didn't say a word. So those are good numbers. Excellent. Warrenson-Pabel?
Okay, here again. I move to approve the school payroll dated September twelve, 2019, in the amount of five-hundred-eighteen-thousand-seventy dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
I move to approve the accounts payroll authorization for payment dated September twelve, 2019, in the amount of one-hundred-eighty-five-thousand-two-hundred-three dollars and thirty-four cents.
Second. All those in favor?
I believe that is it for accounts, if you speak. And then we have minutes, so I would move to approve the regular session minutes from our August twenty-seventh meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
And I move to approve the, this matter is closed, right, the executive session? I move to approve the minutes from our executive session, also on August twenty-seven.
Second.
All those in favor? We have a surplus request?
Yep, from the tech department.
Yep.
So anything we need to discuss with that, or just, I would, I would make a motion to approve the declaration of these items as surplus equipment.
Second to that.
All those in favor?
And just for the general public, it's an old 3D printer, two plotters, and twelve desktop, all-in-one computers.
Do you know what a plotter is? I was just gonna ask that.
Is it for CAD?
Yeah, I think it's, yeah.
And that makes big prints, so if you want to make a big poster.
But these are all very, yeah, they're all very old.
Wow. Never heard of them. We don't have one. Okay, interesting. Okay, we are not going to adjourn, but we are going to take a roll call vote to go into executive session, and then we'll come back out and adjourn. So can we have a roll call vote?
Mary Goldstein.
Cynthia Kozinski.
Marissa Carrery.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Laurie Garcia. All right, I think we will return. Okay, we're back. For anybody who is interested, we were just approving some stipends for some coaching positions. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
That one's mine, Jonathan. All right, all those in favor? Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.